I would like to call to order the meeting of Lake Forest High School Community District 115 Board of Education. This is our budget hearing. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblan?
Here.
Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Scribner?
Here.
Mr. Bergner?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mrs. Golan?
Here, thank you. We have on this agenda our 2012-2013 budget hearing. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Albus and Ms. Hermes.
Thank you. The presentation tonight will have several segments to it. If I can get the slide to move.
It's time for the one on the side. I can do it this way.
The first is a review of the FY12 budget that ended on June 30th. The next will be a review of the legal requirements for budget adoption. We'll look at some of the decisions impacting the FY13 budget. We'll look at the FY13 revenues and expenses and have a summary. Starting with the FY12 budget summary. When the 2012 budget was presented in the summer of 2011, revenues were projected to exceed expenses by $400,000. And if revenues in fact did exceed expenses, it would be the first time in four years that happened. In fact, over the preceding three budget years, the fund balance in the educational, operations and maintenance, debt service, transportation, and Illinois Municipal Retirement Funds fell by almost $3 million. Actions were taken over several years to help balance the budget, including pay freezes for all employees of at least one year and in some cases, two years, staff reductions, project deferrals of facility projects, and vendor contract provisions. It's a little hard to read up there, but the FY12 budget projected $42.8 million in revenues and $42.4 million in expenses. So it was balanced by $400,000. If we look at what actually happened on the revenue side, you can see a couple lines were above what we projected, a couple lines were below, but overall, on $42 million, we missed by 3,000. On the expense side, I'm going to go through that in a little bit more detail. On salaries, we are under budget by $167,000 or eight tenths of 1 percent. Primarily, this is due to hourly-based expenditures such as non-certified employees, substitutes, event supervision, professional development, all things that you estimate at the beginning of the year but are not hard numbers. On the benefit side, we came in $192,000 under budget. Now, part of that is because we were 197 low on salaries. So retirement payments, FICA payments, things like that came in less. But $100,000 of that savings came through our unemployment insurance. Unemployment, if you go back three, four years, our expense was $3,000. I think that was in '09. In '10, it jumped to $24,000. In FY11, it jumped to $88,000. So in this year's budget, we budgeted 125, but thankfully, it fell back down. Our actual expense was about 20,000. Again, that's a hard line to project because it depends if somebody's let go, if they find employment, they're not eligible. After a certain period of time, they were going on federal unemployment. After a certain period of time, they were coming back on ours. So again, it was a really hard line to project. Hopefully, we're entering a period now though we're going to see more stability in that. If you take the next three line items, which are our purchase services, supplies, and capital outlay, and add up those three numbers, we overspent those three line items by about The next one is other in tuition, and that's where the biggest variance of the budget occurred. What makes up, we have two big components in this line. This is where we pay tuition for special ed out-of-district placements. Some of those placement costs can run $100,000 per year per child. So it only takes a variation of one or two children to either help us save money or help us run over budget. And I've stood before you in years past when we've had a couple more kids than anticipated and we went over budget. The other component, though, in this line are payments that we make to Stevenson and Libertyville School Districts, going back to the annexation of Conway Farms and a 20-year court-negotiated agreement. That line is hard to project because there's a formula involved and it has to do with enrollment, how many kids live in certain areas. So that can go up and down. It was down this year. So you add the two of those together, and in fact, if you add all the lines together, we underspent the projected budget by $590,000. But again, $300,000 of that was in the special ed tuition and payments to other government line. But adding that on, well, that variance alone, when you add revenues and expenses, is about a half a percent. When you add that to what we already had projected as far as a budget balance for the year, we ended the year, and I apologize because I know most of you won't be able to see it, we ended the year with revenues exceeding expenses by $994,000. So I'm happy, very happy to report that because for the three preceding years, I wasn't able to stand here and tell you that. In fact, in the three preceding years, we had dipped into fund balance by almost $3 million. So this was a good turnaround. It helped us, it has not gotten us back to restoring our fund balance, but it's the first time in four years that we are in the black.
We'll take a look at the legal requirements for passing a budget for our budget adoption tonight. The budget must be adopted by the end of our first quarter. Our fiscal year does start July 1, therefore, the budget must be adopted by the end of September. Prior to adoption, a school board must, one, place the tentative budget on public display for at least 30 days. Our budget has actually been on display since the middle of July. They must schedule a date and time for a public hearing on the budget. This was scheduled at the board's July meeting, and we're here holding it tonight. We must also publish in a newspaper the date and time of that public hearing and the availability of the tentative budget, which we have also done. Decisions impacting the fiscal year 2013 budget and future years' budgets, the elephant in the room, we have the ongoing labor negotiations with LFEA. We also have capital projects. Alan talked a little bit about some deferred projects, some things that we've had to put on the side for the last few years when we were in those deficit spending. Those things will need to put back into our budgets over the next few years. We cannot continue to put those off any longer. We also have state funding and pension reform. State funding will continue to be an issue. As of June 30, the state owed the district $358,000. Unfortunately, that's been a trend. They have ended the last few years owing us a great deal of money. We took a look at the fiscal year 2013 budget summary, very similar to the presentation when we looked at last year's budget. Direct revenue, direct expenses, the total for this year of revenue over expenses is estimated to be balanced at $73,950. Total funds right around 43, just shy of 44 million in revenue and 43.8 in expenditures. I want to talk a little bit about how we build that budget. The budget's not rolled, it's not trended. We actually build it program by program. We build it employee by employee, benefit line by benefit line, and we work very closely with Principal Hoffman on what are the new initiatives, what are the existing initiatives, what are our goals, what are our objectives, what does that mean? We spend a considerable amount of time. We actually start right after the first of the year. We watch closely and we're waiting for some of the information to flow from the school in regards to sectioning. With labor being the largest component, we're very labor-intensive industry, they're our greatest asset, that really is the biggest block that we drop into our budget. So we start there. When sectioning is complete, we work very closely with Principal Hoffman on what that means as far as staffing. We also start to slide in all those other pieces. We work with buildings and grounds. We work with the technology department. We work with the cafeteria. We work with special education very closely. We meet with all those individuals. We review where we are, where we were at the year-to-date at that point, and then we talk about what they see coming up into the future. So just as in a summary, fiscal year 12, again, first time in four years that revenues exceeded expenses. Fiscal year 13 will not restore the fund balance that we lost between 2009 and 2011. But for the second year in a row, we're pleased to be standing in front of you today and tell you that it is balanced. At this time, I'd recommend that the floor be opened. There is public comment, and this is on the budget. Following public comment, the hearing should be closed, and then the adoption of the 2012-13 budget is on the agenda for consideration and action by the board later tonight.
Thank you, Jen, and thank you, Alan. Do you want to entertain any questions or comments from board members at this time, or have you heard enough from us in the last two months?
No, that'd be fine.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members?
Alan, can you clarify what the impact is of the property tax cap in terms of our revenues?
Well, really, when I stood up here and I talked about the first time in four years balancing the budget because of contractual obligations and just normal costs, every school district and many governmental entities several years ago were impacted when the Consumer Price Index used for the formula came in at one-tenth of 1 percent. That's the lowest in the history of the tax cap. So that meant our revenue grew by one-tenth of 1 percent on property taxes, plus a small amount due to new construction. But because of the way the tax formula works, every year is built on the preceding year. So it wasn't a one-year impact. It changed our revenue stream. And it took us several years to make cuts and accommodations and to really, without really going into programs with a hatchet, and try and readjust or recalibrate to a new revenue stream. But we think we've done that, and, you know, we've been focused on trying to rebuild our fund balances.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of board members? Okay, at this time, we can have public participation. Just a few rules about public participation. Interested speakers should come to the microphone and state their name and address before addressing the board. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes to speak. Everyone has a right within reason to be heard respectfully. Public comment should not be redundant, and all comments should be directed to the board and not the audience. To provide accurate responses, detailed questions posed to the board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. And if the public has any letters or other written materials, they may be handed to the board clerk for the public record. At this time, this is public participation with regard to the budget that you've just heard only. So is there anyone in the audience who has a comment about the budget? None, okay. Then with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The budget hearing is adjourned. At this time, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education for Tuesday, September 11, 2012. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblan?
Here.
Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Scribner?
Here.
Mr. Bergner?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mrs. Golan?
Here, thank you. I'm going to start with the president's report. At the beginning of the president's report this evening, I would like to welcome Mike Simic to Lake Forest High School. I welcomed Mike to his first board meeting in July, and everyone was on vacation and may have missed that. So I'm going to do it again tonight at our first regularly-scheduled board meeting for the school year. So Mike, welcome to Lake Forest High School. I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about us. We have an amazing facility. It was completely renovated a few years ago with the blessing and the dollars from our community. We boast state-of-the-art science labs, music rooms, resource centers, media center, and the like. Our students come to school each day eager to learn. Our parent volunteers volunteer hundreds of hours each month supporting our children and our programs. Our foundation, our boosters, our applause and pals organizations collect private dollars which augment our offerings and staff development. Our citizens fill the bleachers at Varsity Field on Friday nights to watch football, the front lawn on Saturdays to watch field hockey, and our commons area to meet and greet our Olympic gold medal winner. We are Lake Forest High School, Mr. Simic. I know you will come to love and respect this institution as much as we do, so welcome. For the rest of the president's report, we've been asked a lot of questions about what the board negotiating team has offered during this negotiation session. And so we've put together a little presentation, and for that, I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Mike Hernandez, to walk us through what we have as our last and final best offer. Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to go through a little slideshow to walk through, consistent with the board's transparency in many of its presentations here, consistent with the Illinois Educational Labor Relations Act and the publication of the board's last offer, where we are, how this implicates the board's budget. As the public and the board knows, we've been in negotiations since the spring. The board's been available week in and week out, sometimes more than, you know, multiple times during the week to negotiate. The board enlisted the assistance of a federal mediator several months ago, and we continue up until this hour to participate in that. And so, as part of the overview, I think there are a number of points we want to hit. What are the financial differences in the proposals? What's the board's commitment? Because the team doesn't act unilaterally. We act consistent with what the board, as public officials, have informed us. They believe is responsible, consistent with their fiduciary obligations. It has to be consistent with your budget, your 213, 200 fiscal year budget, with the district's ability. We also understand that we want to attract and retain the best teachers for your students. We look at the overall, the current market that the district works within, and then we will go through a detailed board proposal and then do a recap. So what are the major financial differences? The board's proposal for fiscal year 13 is a 2.6 all-in proposal. That's what we are recommending, whereas the LFEA is requesting a 5.6 raise. Now, what does this mean? The board acts within the limitations of the Consumer Price Index, which limits what the board can levy. So within the CPI, what the LFEA is asking for is double what is the CPI, which is 1.5 for fiscal year 2013. The board increases its proposal to 3.4 percent for fiscal year 14, again, consistent with the CPI, whereas the LFEA, again, wants more than double, a 6.5 percent increase. We don't know what the CPI is going to be for 2015 yet. We are, the offer's potentially 3.4 percent because it includes a CPI calculator in there. But again, the union is requesting 5.6 percent increase, potentially double the CPI. What are the major issues with respect to health insurance? For many plans, the LFEA is requesting that the board pay a greater percent of the premium cost. The shaded areas, and it's kind of hard to see here, but let me kind of walk through what those shaded areas are. The only shaded area for the board, the board's request, is in the HMO family premium split. That's where the board is asking for more contribution consistent to what's happening in the marketplace from the union. What the LFEA has asked for is the board to pick up in at least five different areas of the insurance proposals. And that is the PPO 300, PPO 300 family, PPO 500 single premium, PPO 500 family, as well as the PPO 750. Now, what's been the board's commitment with respect to their fiscal obligation, as well as their obligation to their educational programs? We want to maintain a highly competitive salary and benefit package to attract and retain exceptional employees. The board respects its employees and wants to maintain that high level of exceptional employees that they have. We have to protect the educational offerings and extracurricular programs. We have to address ongoing facility needs. The board needs to restore fund balances that were depleted as a result of the economic downturn and the loss of revenues. This is the reality of what we're working with here, and the board has, again, the fiduciary obligation to ensure that those issues are addressed with respect to restoring fund balances. And then remaining fiscally responsible to this community. You know, this community, Lake County, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, the communities that the high school serves, they're like every other community. They've been affected by foreclosures, by individuals who have lost their jobs, and so the board understands that and has made sure they keep that as an important part of their consideration here. You know, I'm not going to repeat the budget, but I just want to highlight a couple of issues that were set forth in the budget. So we, one of the issues is, what are the real numbers? Well, the board has an obligation to present numbers. These numbers are vetted, these numbers are audited, and these are the numbers that are accepted by the Illinois State Board of Education. We see these other projections that have been out there that we're not sure where they've come from. But we know that, consistent with the budget presentation today, that as mentioned earlier, that the fiscal year 13 budget represents revenues over expenditures of about $73,950. Now, for the FY13 budget summary, the LFEA projects an ending fund balance of $10 million for 2013, requiring a surplus of $7 million. Now, in order to meet the LFEA projected fund balance of over $10 million by the end of 2013, there would need to be, again, a $7 million surplus. Now, so how do you get to something like that? Well, the only way to get to that, you'd have to either increase revenue or decrease expenses, or you can do a combination of the two. Now, remember, consistent with what the board had projected for fiscal 2012, the revenue projections were within $3,200. That's one of the highest levels of integrity you're going to see in a board budget anywhere, public or private sector. Why don't we move to the budget summary? So if we look at the budget summary, what would the board have to do in order to create this fictitious $10 million, $7 million surplus? The next slide shows that you'd literally have to cut the operation and maintenance budget by $4.5 million, transportation budget by $746,000, the working cash fund by almost a million. Even if you make all those cuts, you're still nowhere near this supposed $7 million surplus. So again, the numbers don't seem to add up with what is being proposed and projected. Our numbers seem to be consistent. To achieve the fund balances, as the slide indicates, of $10 million by the end of 2013, we would have to, the district's expenses would need to be less than they were six years ago, and we know that that's not been the case. Expenses have increased, but the board has still stayed responsible toward the public when it comes to those types of increases. What about the issue of the district's ability to attract and retain high-level teachers? Well, The Tribune reported, as the board and the community may recall, that the, back in 2011, that Lake Forest High School had the second-highest average teacher salary in the state. The Sun-Times recently reported that the Lake Forest High School beginning bachelor and the master salaries ranked in the top 2 percent, top masters in a high salary ranked in the top 1 percent. So the district has been able to retain and attract an educated and experienced staff, and with this offer, will continue to attract similar employees. Now, why don't we talk a little bit about the current marketplace, because that's what we're working with it. It's the reality of what's happening out there. You have people that are losing their jobs, people that are taking pay cuts, and what's happening here? So what this slide, and I know it's kind of difficult to see, but what it is, is kind of a comparison of where are some of the comparable districts and what has happened to some of the comparable districts. So the first district is Main Township High School. Their FY13 offer 0.7 percent. The board is offering 2.6 percent. Evanston Township High School, a one-time payment of $50,000. Evanston Township High School, a one-time payment of $1,500. Highland Park, 2.5. That seems to be consistent with the market and what the Board is offering here. Zion Benton, between 2.0 and 3%. Again, some of those vary a little bit. What has Main Township done? They lengthened the salary schedule for all the employees, and we're going to talk a little about salary schedule and what steps mean. They kept future insurance increases. That means every time you go to negotiations, that has to be revisited because there was a cap there to prevent the Board from incurring these excessive costs in insurance. What happened with Evanston? They froze stipends for four years, and they kept future insurance increases. The Board's not asking for that. What happened to Highland Park? They already have a different salary schedule for new employees versus existing employees. Zion Benton, they eliminated the salary schedule, and new employees will have limited access to insurance plans. That is not what the Board is asking here. Again, what the LFAA proposal is, 5.6%, 6.5%, and 5.6%. With this analysis, you could see how we can stay competitive and continue to attract high-level employees. Now, the proposed salary, again, we just, the next slide, we're just walking through, again, what the Board's offer is, and we've got the, for the last year, the CPI formula. That's important, because what that does is, it allows the Board, to the extent that there is an uptick in the economy, then everybody can benefit from that. But if not, since the Board has limitations, everybody has to live by those limitations the way administrative staff will, so will the unionized staff. Let me talk a little about the salary schedule and how that works and how this proposal works with the salary schedule. So if we can go back to the previous slide, thank you. So what we have here is, the Board has and will show you a multi-step salary schedule, depending on the years of service, as well as your experience and education. Okay? And so what this demonstrates is that 82% of the Board's employees with that salary schedule, and the proposal right now does not affect changing that salary schedule for the present employees, the average increase for that salary schedule is 3%. 100% of the non-tenure teachers, these are your new teachers who come in, who you want to attract, will receive a 4% increase under that salary schedule. Now, there are other people who will receive less, but those people fall into the retirement program that the Board offers, which is a generous program. So as you look at the salary schedule, you see that, again, it is a competitive salary schedule to allow the Board to continue to attract top teachers. So let's look at an actual step in the salary schedule so we can understand this. Now, this one's going to be hard to read, but I'm going to walk you through it. Let's look at the salary schedule. So what you see here is you have what's called lanes. And so if I'm a teacher and I get a BA, or I get a BA plus 15, that second column says BA plus 50. So I get a BA plus 15 hours of credit, I move a lane over, so I get an increase with that. Now, just simply by staying here, the highlighted salary step shows that I'm at $88,302. All I do is I stay committed to the district, I stay here for another year, and I get almost a 3.6% increase. That's $3,185. That's the salary schedule in place, that's what the Board is committed to, and they have not proposed changing their salary for present employees. So what does the Board have to do as it moves to its future, to stay fiscally responsible and yet competitive? Why don't we look at the next slide? So what has happened recently, as the public and the Board is aware, is there's been changes in the pension legislation. And so to stay consistent with the changes in the pension legislation, the Board has proposed a second-tier salary schedule for new employees. Okay? No impact on current employees, and it only impacts new employees to the fact that it's consistent with the new pension law. Now, are other districts doing this? Are we the only ones that are doing this? They're not. The Board's not trying to be punitive here. Main Township lengthened the salary schedule. Highland Park implemented a new salary schedule. Zion Benton eliminated the salary schedule completely. No steps, no guaranteed steps, no guaranteed lanes. That's not what the district is proposing here. Addison District 4 eliminated the salary schedule. Why don't we look at a couple of other districts? Palatine District 15 implemented a new schedule for future employees. You're starting to understand what other districts, as well as the Board, have an obligation to do. Skokie District 69 eliminated the salary schedule beginning in 2014. We're not proposing that. We're proposing a new salary schedule with steps, consistent with the new pension law. Wheaton 200 implemented a partial step in each of the next two years. So you could either present the new schedule, or you could have a half-step within the present schedule. What about retirement? The Board has the retirement package, no current changes, and in fact, has potentially enhanced it in the following fashion. The union said they have a concern, and that is that there may have been some people who have become what's called pipeline people. That is, when you put your letter in advance, that you're going to retire, you are allowed to participate in the Board retirement program. But they said some people have encountered some sort of personal catastrophe where they can no longer retire. These are difficult times. They said, can you give us an opportunity for that person to rescind? Because if there is any advancement, they would pay it back. The Board said, yes, we will give you that opportunity, but it's the Board's decision. And that's what the Board stands by in that proposal. So to recap, again, one change with respect to the health insurance, and that's the HMO family, to go to a 90-10%, which is absolutely consistent with the marketplace. The next slide shows that the union wanted the Board to contribute in five different areas to pick up more of the cost, whereas the Board is already picking up 100% in some of the other proposals. You're not seeing this elsewhere, but the Board has been committed to the employees, and they know this is an important component of any salary and benefits package. Again, competitive salaries, 2.6%, 3.4%, and 3.4%, consistent with the CPI, and to also be competitive with a number of the market districts. And so that's where we stand right now, Madam President, and to the extent we need, we'll be available after this meeting to speak to the union.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez. Even I fully understand this now. Okay, moving on, we have our superintendent's report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan, and briefly, I'd like to say thank you for the welcome. Very excited to be here. And our current unrest aside, I can tell you that the school year is actually off to a remarkably great start. Wonderful freshman orientation, I saw that. If you haven't seen that before, it's where the upperclassmen are called Link Crew, volunteer their time, and work very hard to prepare for a welcome for incoming ninth graders. And I don't know if you remember what it's like when you went to school, but I can tell you that I've never seen a welcome like this for any child in my entire life. The kids work incredibly hard, the staff did a fantastic job preparing for them. One of the things I observed was some kids that were new to the district, new to the school, all of them were, various staff scooping them up, finding a place, guiding them through the process, where do I need to go, what do I need to do, put them in the gym, and then the program started to get them to mingle. And one of the most interesting things is to watch the students work with other students. And I paid particular attention to one senior boy and watched him work with all these goofy freshmen, in front of him and beside him and next to him, cajoling them, helping them, and guiding them through this crazy exercise that they went through. They walked around the school, they did all these things, a tremendous program that everybody should be really proud of. If you haven't seen it, you should go, it will, it'll bring tears to your eyes to see it. It's just an amazing thing to think of the difference from what school entry was like for many of us, or most of us, I could probably say safely, and what it's like for the students entering our high school. It's spectacular. I also watched that same boy work on an athletic team with freshmen on that athletic team, and, hey, how'd you do? And this kid's not the best athlete on the team, the senior boy, but encouraging them there as well. Very inspiring. Also, the Grievers celebration, hometown kid, family that everybody's really proud of, spectacular event in the Commons there with all little kids in front of them, and Matt could not possibly have been more gracious and more kind. He waited and signed autographs, also said, it's not worth anything, but I'll sign them. And signed autographs for every kid that was there, smiled for every picture. Kids came with newspaper clippings that mom had laminated, I'm assuming, with their Sharpie pen in hand, waiting for him, incredibly excited group. And observing the high school, one of the things that I watch for as a new superintendent are a couple of the basics. The first two obligations that a school should meet is that it is safe and that it is orderly. And one of the very encouraging aspects of watching our high school work is to observe our students. The pride they take in their building is evident from the fact that, from their behavior, just watching them. They respect themselves, they've internalized expectations, both for themselves and for others. They move from class to class, there's a graduated level of expectation for them and the liberties that they get to move about freely during the course of the day. Freshmen have fewer, and by the time you're a senior, you can move around very much like a college campus. And it is, it's a great thing to watch how responsible our kids are with their learning and also with the building, and then with each other. Also, the professional staff that we have, we have very, a huge number of incredibly committed and caring people that work with our kids at all levels, with the administration, with our teachers, our staff support there as well. We also have, you go back to the kids, you have nice kids. They say thank you, they say please, they hold doors for each other. In one of the conversations I had with one of the teachers, he said, you know, he introduced himself and said, you know, hey, I wanted to say hi, and I asked him, so, you know, why are you here? Why did you come to Lake Forest? And he'd been somewhere else. And he said, well, I came because you guys, you know, Lake Forest had a lot more resources, and that was a real attraction. And he left and was with his kids, and he came back, this is at the football game a couple of weeks ago, and he came up, he said, I want to change my answer. He said, the reason that I love my job is because I never have a day that goes by where kids don't leave my room and say thank you. And that says a lot about the homes they come from, it says a lot about the teachers that teach them, and the atmosphere in which they all work. People are proud of the place. You know, I've got two kids in the building myself, and one of the things that my kids say regularly when they go up is, man, who wouldn't be proud to go to this school? It's a beautiful place and a very caring atmosphere that I think we're all proud of, and that's part of the reason why we're all here tonight. So with that, I'd like to move into a couple of things more goal-oriented, a little drier on this stuff, but nonetheless important. I have an entry plan. One of the things that the Board asked me to do is to create an entry plan, and that is to do a variety of things, both in the community and also in the school building. So I'm about two-thirds of the way through that entry plan. One of the parts of those goals is to develop our next set of administrative talent and to look for how those positions will be filled, so that is ongoing. Another part is the school evaluation system, the teacher evaluation system, and the administrator evaluation system, and to see that that was well underway. We've had Principal Hoffman, Mrs. Knight, and all of the various people that are going to be implementing that have been working very hard, and that is well underway. And finally, was asked to develop goals collaboratively with the school board. So we've had a workshop, had a number of entry plan meetings, ongoing committee work, and then also a great deal of formal and informal feedback on where are we headed next and what should our goals be? With that, Madam President, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. It did not take you long to get scout fevered, did it? Okay, next we have the public participation, and that's for anything you want to talk about. The rules are still in play. Some of you did not hear them the first time, I'll just go through them again briefly. But interested speakers should come to the microphone and state their name and address before addressing the Board, and I'd like you to wait until I've recognized you and send you up there. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to speak. You don't get a second turn until everybody has gone through, and if you want to be here all night, don't take a second turn. Public comment should not be redundant, and all comments should be directed to the Board and not the audience. To provide accurate responses, detailed questions posed to the Board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. The public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. And again, if you have any letters or written materials, they may be handed to the Board Clerk for the public record. So with a show of hands, who would like to speak this evening? Yes, sir, if you would go up to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Peter Acker. My address is 218 East Scranton Avenue. I live in Lake Bluff. Can I start? Okay. I'd like to give a little background on myself. I know I have three minutes. I have 25 years of experience working in the private sector in human resources, and I've been helping companies, probably hundreds of companies, with managing compensation and benefits. I want to start off, and first of all, compliment our teachers at the high school and also at the lower level, but primarily the teachers. I have three children, one who's just recently graduated, and two in the high school. They've done a fantastic job. I moved to the district five years ago. I had the luxury of living in Europe, and I actually went to the various schools interviewing the principals. I did all the research, and I landed in Lake Forest. I think it was a great decision, and I'm still very pleased that I made it at the time. But I'd like to talk a little bit about what the school Board has offered and what the teachers are requesting. I really think it boils down to attracting and retaining the best talent, and I think we have some of the best teachers in the area, if not in the state. However, I'd like to take some of the points separately. The first is the base salary. On average, out in the private sector, companies for the last several years have been increasing pay at about 3% a year. And I've also done the analysis, as the school Board has, and I've researched, because it's out there on public record, the increases the other school districts have been providing. And on average, they have been increasing at about 3% a year. So therefore, I think the offer that the school Board has made is very fair and will keep our teachers very competitive. And I think in terms of the benchmarking of our teachers, whether it's the scale or the entry level for masters or bachelor, our teachers are well-paid, and I think they should be, because I think they're some of the best teachers out there. However, I think what the teachers are requesting is out of line and out of scope. The second is the healthcare issue regarding the PPO and the HMO plan. In the private sector, employees are expected to pay 25% to 30% of the healthcare costs. Up until now, our teachers have been paying between 0% and 10%. I think the offer that the school Board has made in terms of keeping the HMO at a 10% cost sharing for the teachers, and for the family PPO plan at 20% is very competitive, and it's also consistent with many of the other schools in the area. And finally, the last point was the fund balances. I think it's a moot point. I don't know if, what other taxpayers think, but if it's a surplus of $4 million or $10 million, it doesn't belong to anybody but the taxpayers. If there's an excess fund out there, then I think as taxpayers, our tax rate should go down to make up the difference. I don't think it's anyone else's money to decide where it should go. I don't think it's anyone else's money to decide where it should go. Finally, I'd like to close that I, I think, as you can tell, I support the school district and their offer that they've made, but I'd like to make a comment to any of the teachers. I'd like you to take a look around the environment that you're teaching in and the, the support you get from the parents, the facilities, all the, the funding is provided to you, the quality of the, of the students that you have, the respect they have for you. I think it's a very, very good working environment. However, I want to, I want you to really think about the goodwill that you've built up over the years of all the hard work you've put in and the support you've built with the parents. Is it really worth destroying that goodwill for you to go out on strike? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gail Gamrath. I taught your daughter, and I coached your daughter, Mr. Carey. I live at 660 Green Bay Road in Lake Bluff. I'm here as a 1987 graduate at Lake Forest High School. I'm also here as a 18-year teacher and now administrator leader at Nutria High School, but most importantly, I'm here as a parent of three kids that are now at Lake Bluff Elementary School. I was lucky enough to attend Lake Forest High School in the Robert Metcalf era. We had awesome teachers, and I was more than prepared to enter college. The teachers of Peter Ferry, Chris Chard, Brenda Perkins, Dan Code, Mark Samuels, Lifers at Lake Forest High School. It was a gift to work with them. It saddened me to see what has transpired here, and I appreciate some of Mr. Acker's comments. It's a hard, hard time to compare private versus public sector. But in talking to my colleagues, when Lake Forest and Nutria talk about different hires and Lake Forest calls us for references, this summer even, we were trying to recommend some great hires that we couldn't take on to our work staff. We were told by the Lake Forest leaders, "We can't hire them, we need to go cheap." And cheap was a word they used over and over. And that really saddened me to think that my kids are going to come here and not have some of the best teachers that are out there. When you look at this two-tier program, we are not going to be competitive. These teachers that come may learn a little bit of their trade here, and, you know, we all struggle a little bit when we know our kids get the new teacher, and are they okay? And, and it's hard, and the time it takes to train a new teacher and bring them along is a cost to the entire district, but most of all, a cost to our children. So to see that after five years, a teacher would not be given the same salary that the surrounding districts, it saddens me that they're not going to be my kids' teachers, they're going to be my colleagues. And I think a note also, as far as the responsibility of the board, I really value what you do. It's volunteer, it's hard. But when you look at what was destroyed after the Metcalf era, when we went into the Dr. Kessler years of the early 90s, and what that board did to the climate and everything with the teachers, all that goodwill disappears. So the extra hours that kids are taking out to red trips, or going to Europe, or going to different places and working with the teachers like they did with me in the 80s are gone. And I don't want to make it sound like teachers are going to take their ball and go home, because sometimes we get the reputation of being spoiled, and we can be complainers. I know that, because I am one. But we have to look at what's going on, and fiscal responsibility goes so far, but what are we doing? And what are we doing to the climate of the disrespectful negotiations that I have witnessed going on by my colleagues that teach at Lake Forest High School? So I think we have to be really careful. We get what we pay for many times, and it's very important to look at the responsibility across the board. We are a lighthouse district here at Lake Forest High School, as we are at Nutria. And if we want to look at retaining teachers, perhaps we should look at systems like merit pay, which we do have at Nutria, and different things that bring the current faculty along instead of cutting out the knees from underneath of, of a profession that is, when you take away some of the other perks, is not a very highly paid profession. And I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gail.
I have one last point, that the figures you had for Nutria up there were wrong, so that's hard for me, because it makes me question everything and the cherry pick pieces of the different contracts you have.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yes?
My name is Stephanie Martin. I live at 126 East Sheridan Place, Lake Bluff. I don't have a prepared statement, but I just have some questions for clarification. I know you can't respond at this juncture, but I just, trying to make sense of all the numbers, like I think a lot of people in the community, it's, the board says this, the union says this, and we're stuck in the middle trying to figure out, you know, is the truth somewhere in the middle? Is it somewhere in between? One of my first comments is to the attorney who spoke earlier. He cited Maine and Zion Benton in comparison, and I was just wondering if you guys have considered what the average ACT score is at Maine and Zion Benton as compared with Lake Forest High School? I think that would be an interesting comparison. If you're going to use those districts as comparison for salaries, I think it's fair to only look at student achievement as well. I also wondered about the cited information of other North Shore districts that have two-tier pay scales, that is, one for experienced teachers and one for new hires. You cited HP Highland Park as one of the districts that has a two-tier or separate scales for new hires versus experienced staff. Is there any other, are there any other districts in the North Shore with competitive ACT scores that have this two-tier system? It'd just be something that I'd be curious to know, besides Highland Park. And in addition to that, I happen to know that Highland Park, if my information is correct, Highland Park, which also includes Deerfield High School, it's Township High School District 113, they do have a split scale, they do have a scale for new hires, but they also offer some interesting benefits that experienced teachers don't get, and they include things like $2,000 per year, 403B matching. And I'm wondering if Lake Forest has considered that as an option. My information could be wrong, but this is the information that's been given to me, and I'm trying to work with it, and I'm trying to make sense of it as I muddle my way through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
My name is Brad Cundy, 475 West Deerpath. I've got a question to the attorney who explained the numbers here. The one point about the teacher from the eighth to the ninth year, the space, the pay schedule took him up like $3,500. Do you remember that example that you talked about?
Yeah, I do. I don't think it was.
No, that's fine, but if indeed, and this happened in 2014, and they got their 6.5% increase, we're talking about close to $8,000 or $9,000 increase for that one teacher for one year, right?
One of the confusing things is, is you're right, that, that what, what gets asked for is money on top of step.
Right.
So it's potentially.
Eight or $9,000 increase. Now, I for one, as a taxpayer in this town, am wondering, and since the state is giving you nothing, because they're broke, this is all going to fall on the back of the taxpayers in this town, our property taxes, correct?
Yes.
And I for one, think I pay enough. There are people who are hurting in this town. You've got people losing homes, and we do not need to increase our taxes 4, 5, 6, 7% a year and think that we will be viable. I just don't think it's, it's a possibility at this time. The country's hurting, the state's broke, the county's not doing well, and we're in a very affluent society, which isn't so affluent anymore. And I think that we need to look at this. I think you've done a good job with your numbers. I think the teachers should not be lucky they're working here, but the point that they have a great place, a great school, fairly good kids, a marvelous community, means something to me as a parent who's taken five or six kids through this high school. And they had a great, great education, granted. I'm all for the teachers, but I think in this case, they should and better step back and look at their numbers and realize that this whole country is hurting, and they are not any more special than anybody else in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cundy. Yes, Ms. Thorner?
I'm Nancy Thorner from Lake Bluff. It concerns me with the board that they might not hold firm. I've been doing a lot of writing and research about teachers' salaries over the years and everything, and the teachers' salaries at Lake Forest High School are really the highest in the whole state. The salaries are easily, easily gotten by going to different websites. I won't say that website now, but with a flick of a button or so, I could get the salaries of all the teachers at Lake Forest High School this afternoon, and 90% of the teachers earn just about $100,000 or more. And the 25 top teachers at Lake Forest High School, the very top teacher, of course, is the athletic director, which is athlete for flipper, I think, is $168,740. And then the, the 25th teacher is environmental science teacher, Mary Beth Nabor, at $129,000, almost $130,000. And this is before any health benefits are paid, any pension costs are paid, any perks, any annuities, or what have you. I think in a sense, too, that teachers can retire at the age of 55. Many of them do. By the time they're 65, they're earning with their pensions almost as much as they earned as their last year of teaching. Many teachers, the two teachers that retired last year, are getting for their pensions this year over $100,000. This to me is outrageous, because the taxpayers are paying for it, and the more the salaries go up, the more we have to pay as taxpayers for pensions, which go up also with their salaries. And teachers, once they retire, not only do they get these fabulous salaries, which are very, very good, but they also get 3% COLA raises every single year for as long as they live, which puts their salaries up sky high. Now, I'm all for teachers. I was a teacher, too, but I started back in 19, rather, started teaching in 1960 in Pennsylvania, before unions. My salary was $5,000. That was, of course, a good salary at that time, but it has changed drastically. Teachers will get good salaries, but with all people, enough is enough. When is it going to stop? We have to stop being competitive. It can't keep going up forever, because our society cannot afford it anymore. Everybody is cutting back, businesses are cutting back, and I think teachers do have to be willing to cut back a little bit, because after all, teaching was supposed to be a profession where you loved to teach because you loved children. Now it seems to be all about money, and that's sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thorner. Yes?
My name is Rosemary Herlin. I live at 690 South Eaton Court. First of all, I greatly respect teachers, but I'm here tonight to just quickly say that I support the board in this measure. Now is not the time to strike. It's hard to separate the private sector, but at this time, there are so many people hurting, so many people unemployed, and I think it diminishes the respect for our teachers to have this strike at this time. I have a background in compensation and benefits, so I know these benefits are fair, and if we keep going up and keep giving in, it can bankrupt. It can bankrupt a company, it can bankrupt a city. So I am here to support the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Yes, sir.
If you'll pardon me, I don't like speaking in public. Little nervous. I'm here, actually, representing my mother, who owns a home here in Lake Forest. I, I take care of her finances. She lives at 66 Adderage. I live in Gurnee. I've got a little bit of a different perspective here, because I went through all my schooling in Lake Forest, Cherokee School, Gorton, when Gorton was a school, Deerpath Junior High, and all four years at Lake Forest. And I have to tell you, another perspective from my, my point of view is, my wife is a teacher, and she does not teach at Lake Forest, but she does teach on the North Shore. One of the things that I've always been fascinated with is finance, and I have to tell you a brief story. About 10 years ago, my wife and I were in our kitchen, and I said to her, "What's your pension?" And she told me, and I said, "There's no way." I said, "That would bankrupt a private company in two seconds flat." Said, "Show me that in writing." She wasn't offended, she knows me, I just like to see, see it in writing. So she went to TRS, Teachers Retirement System, and brought back her pension data, and I'm going to tell you exactly how I said it, I'm going to do it word for word. I looked at the pension, and I said, "Oh, my God, we've won the lottery, and we're going to bankrupt our children. We are going to bankrupt our children, and we have won the lottery." The net present value, and for any of you students who like math, and I understand that the head of the teachers' union is a math teacher, the net present value of $100,000 salary when you retire is approximately $1 million in cash after taxes in the bank. If you would stand out front of the doors at Lake Forest High School and hand out guaranteed $1 million winning lottery tickets to each teacher as they leave the school, they would be a fool to take the $1 million ticket, an absolute fool. I want to tell you that this is unsustainable. You cannot take these kinds of benefits and continue to give them in perpetuity. The single largest debt of the state of Illinois are teachers' pensions, single largest debt. And I want you to understand that for any students, anyone who's not interested in finance, this is boring, but when pensions tell you how underfunded they are, they're predicting what they're going to get with their investments, and the predictions have been over-optimistic. It's kind of like telling your parents, "I'm going to get an A, I'm going to get an A next quarter," but you keep getting Cs. What's going to happen when the state has to start using the new rules for showing how underfunded the pension system is? Right now, it would show about 18% is what they have compared to what they need. And that means for every $100 you have to give a teacher, you only have $18 in the bank, and that money has to come from someplace. Now, why is the pension important? Pension is important because this is part of compensation. This is their compensation, it's never been made public, really. They don't talk about it. I just have to say that they're outrageously compensated for what they do, and I think that there's some great teachers, but they need to have a reality check. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Julie Eckert. I live at 518 Forest Cove Road in Lake Bluff. I come before the board this evening as a parent. I have appreciated everyone's comments this evening, and there is a lot to be discussed. And I come as a parent with a student who is a senior, and I ask both sides to please this evening really work to come to an agreement. You have a lot of children in the room, you have a lot of children that are in the back who have come, who are concerned, who want to go to school, who want their teachers to be here, and I ask that you truly work hard this evening so that tomorrow does not end with a strike. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Other comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Mike Quaid, two-two-one Keith Lane, Lake Forest. You know, in any negotiation, there's always got to be an alternative to negotiate agreement. I don't know what the alternative is for the teachers, and at this point, I really don't care. I want to know what the board's going to do as an alternative to fashion this thing out. Is there a plan in place that you can talk about?
With regard to...
If you don't come to an agreement with the teachers?
If we don't come to an agreement tonight, if there is a strike, we have a strike plan, and we have that on our website. Yes.
How long does the strike last? How long do the teachers have rights to keep their jobs? Do you know the answer to that?
They can go out on strike. That's protected activity, and I don't want to get too much detail because, again, but the board has the right to look at as we move forward to run its schools. They have the right to do that. And so in the strike plan, they're going to be opening for essential services, and then beyond those first few days, they're looking at trying to open instructional program with staff that they can put in place.
And then school would be considered in session at that point?
That's one of the goals.
Okay. And hopefully, that would be next week if the teachers were going on strike tonight?
That's one of the goals, yes.
In the meantime, any plans we have will be posted on a daily basis on our website, and also our parents will be notified through the constant, what's it called? Constant contact.
Yeah, and so Mr. Keaton just asked me to follow up with the sporting events aspect, and it's my understanding that for the school to participate in extracurricular activities through the IHSA, school has to be in session. That can mean that a strike is occurring, but as long as the school is in session, we potentially participate in sports. I think that's why a lot of these kids are here as well, to find out what the skinny is on that.
Let me just clarify. So what we're going to, what you're entitled to do and what we're working toward is practices, first of all. That's the first thing we look at because we're entitled to do that even if there is a work stoppage. So the next question becomes is if it's a work stoppage, can you have games? Can you play competitive games? You cannot, but what we're moving toward is trying to get instructional program in place so that we can be considered in session so that they can do competitive games.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? You beat the timer. Okay, see none. I'm going to end public participation at this time. I'm going to thank everybody who did participate. I'm going to thank everybody who attended tonight. Hopefully, beside this topic, you learned a little bit of what we do, and we are here every month, and you're always welcome to come and visit us. We will be moving on with our agenda, and you're welcome to stay. And if you have homework tomorrow, then you should probably not.
So this will take you forward.
Is that working?
Yeah. It just, if it sticks, just pop it back.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. We have a report tonight, and the report is on college counseling, which is really interesting, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim Thiel.
Thank you. As has been stated many times here tonight, you know, we want to celebrate our successes in class of two thousand twelve, many successes, and what I want to cover tonight is a brief overview, rather than just have all the numbers that you have in the report, is just give you some background and an overview of some of the counselors as far as their experiences and relationship with the college process, things that really aren't in your report, but just some background. Last year, our counselors made over sixty visits to different colleges and universities, mainly in the Midwest, but we visited North Carolina, Louisiana, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Indiana, Vermont, and Illinois. Again, as you can see, there we go. Majority of our students do attend the Midwest schools. We're ahead of ourselves. All right, Cornelia is just going to help me out there. Thank you. And again, so our focus with the counselors with college visits has been mainly in the Midwest. However, as I just said, they've visited the three other regions for college visits quite a bit. One of the goals is to visit colleges out in the West region, which we have not done in the last couple of years. Currently, we're looking at attending the National Association of College Admission Counseling out in Colorado and Denver, and there's many schools that our students apply to and attend. So that is on our list for next month, as well as Arizona State. We just received some information from them, and many of the colleges, which is really nice, is that they're willing to pay partial or almost all the expenses to travel out and visit their campuses and see their programs. So we're looking to also venture out to Arizona, which we haven't done, as I said, the last two years. So the other things that I like to highlight is that the counselors continue to take advantage of college fairs and luncheons that are throughout the Chicagoland area with local colleges, as well as many of the Midwest schools, and they feel it's very important that they continue to build those relationships with college reps and get out to these affairs and try to meet admissions people. The other comment is that last March, this was a really big success for us, we held our college seminar on campus over at East Campus, and we had approximately two hundred parents and students that attended. We had three sessions, and that included a Lake Forest college representative we brought in that spoke in regard to college advancement, picking majors, and looking at career plan. Northwestern representative came in and spoke about financial aid, including loans and grants. Brad Naughton presented on the NCAA clearinghouse and the recruiting process, and Bart Pap spoke about resume and essay writing. And as I said, on a Saturday morning, to have two hundred parents and students, it was very well perceived, and we're looking forward to doing it again this spring. Another thing that extremely proud of is that we were able to bring in last year, two hundred and sixty college representatives from all over the country to meet with our students and counselors during the school day. We had reps from all over the country, as well as military, gap schools, prep schools, many art and specialty schools, and that was validated by our students in their two thousand twelve survey. The highest number ever, forty-one percent, had said that they valued and felt that the meeting college representatives was very beneficial in their college decision. So we're really proud that we're able to bring in that many representatives throughout the school year and support them in trying to make those decisions. Next, just a couple of quick items that you have in your report. The two thousand twelve class applied to four hundred and eighty different schools and a hundred and seventy-two schools attended, which are kind of record numbers in recent years. Students are exploring more opportunities, applying to more schools, and obviously attending more schools. Forty-six of our top schools that had three or more students attend, the two thousand two, two thousand twelve class of those schools, twenty-nine of those forty-six schools, the acceptance rate was better than the five-year average. So we are being very successful in those top schools that students are applying to. The other two quick stats I want to point out is that the most competitive schools, we had more applicants and more acceptance last year than the past five years, and we also had our second highest rate to Ivy League schools in the past five years at thirteen students. Our region, again, pretty self-explanatory, been pretty consistent, looking at the five-year comparison down below. Again, we're top five schools that were, students were accepted. These are the same top five schools from last year. Again, they tend to be schools, the larger schools, public schools that are popular, Indiana being our top accepted at ninety-five students, and then the list goes down. And again, in the student survey, the public schools that are the top accepted and applied to, our students are looking for the big campus feel. They want that sports and fraternity, the Greek system, and all these schools are three to four hours away, so the location is important for their decisions if we're applying as well as attending. Private accepted schools, the top three, DePaul, Marquette, and Dayton are, again, pretty consistent in the last five years and really for longstanding, have been popular schools for Lake Forest students. DePaul in Indiana University is definitely a newcomer, and I'm going to talk about them in a slide from the next slide or two, but we had thirty-one students and twenty-five accepted there, which is a huge increase from last year and years past. And then TCU rounding out that list. Back to the attended, and we're missing a number there. I'm sorry about that. That's twenty-six for University of Illinois, which is always our top attended school for public schools. Miami of Ohio, Indiana, and if you look, we have Indiana at ten, and also what's missing is Iowa, which Iowa had sixty-four students that were accepted, but only five students attended, and that's Indiana also being the highest on the list at a hundred and seventeen for accept, attended, excuse me, applied, and then ninety-five accepted. Those are both what we call safety schools. There are a lot of students that have applied to those schools. They're good schools, but they are their third, second, fourth choice, and so they are considered what we call safety schools for a lot of our students. So we have high acceptance rates at those schools, but not as high as numbers attend them. Michigan, on the other hand, comes in with nine students attending, and we had twenty-seven students accepted there, a larger number by percentage attending there on acceptance because that's more of a target school. If they get in, that's a top choice. They want to go to Michigan. And then University of Missouri, Columbia is rounding out the top five. Our private schools, again, Dayton tends to be in the top every year. It's very popular. There's a lot of similarities, I think, to Lake Forest in that they're very community-service-based. Our students obviously have that experience here at Lake Forest High School. It's a small, big school. It's not your three thousand. It's a little bit bigger, so you get a little bit more of the big campus feel, and it's been one of our top private institutions that students have attended. Now, again, as I talked about, DePaul in Indiana University, having ten students. Last year, we had no students attend, and so I decided to do a little research and just find out what was the big change. Well, it's just, you know, sometimes it's a hot school. I mean, we had Santa Clara last year that was a very popular school, and a lot of students attended and was on our top five private. What I found was that forty-five percent of the freshmen receive merit-based scholarship aid, and that is huge. That is a large number compared to your private and other public institutions. So there's a lot of help there. They also are in the top ten of study abroad programs. Well, students from Lake Forest, I've heard this for years. I've experienced it with my own children. A lot of students from Lake Forest High School go study abroad, and DePaul University has an excellent program. They also have, and I think this is one of the biggest factors that are deciding a lot of students on college selections right now, is they have a ninety-five percent graduate school and employment placement after nine months. That, to me, is what a lot of students are looking for in parents. They're not looking so much what colleges will do for them, what the four years are there. They're also looking at what's going to happen postgraduate, and I think that's where this university has really attracted a lot of students of recent. I think people are doing a lot more homework, looking at colleges and making decisions. And obviously, one thing, the private institutions, numbers are increasing with enrollments. Hope College fits into the same category, a small Catholic school up in Holland, Michigan, and then the rest are rounding out the top five. And Northwestern at six. We did have fourteen students accepted there, though, last year. Six just chose to go, though. And I'll be brief on our percentages because percentages are percentages, but looking at them, one of the things that we've tried to compare over the years is our acceptance rates by percentage, and last year, our percentages were, again, pretty much holding their own throughout the top public institutions. University of Illinois, we continue to be better than the five-year average last year, and overall, all the schools were doing very well. Michigan took a little dip, but overall, we're doing very well at the schools of choice, especially the top schools. As I said earlier, the same can be said about our private schools, more popular, more applications, and more acceptance. The private schools, I think for students that we have here at Lake Forest, it's a very good marriage, so to speak. They like our students, and I think our students like the private schools, so there's a lot of them applying and looking at the private schools and what they offer. And as you can see, the acceptance rates are extremely high. Just a Navient update. We continue to use electronic transcripts, third year, going very well. We have more and more teachers that are being trained. We increased that by seventeen teachers last year with recommendations on Navients, and we even use it for the core courses, recommendations that the teachers do. In closing, I'd just like to say what we know is that our test scores are going up. They're climbing. Acceptance rates, as you can see, are improving, and not only for most schools, many schools, but also the most competitive schools. And I think the thing that I think we all need to be most proud of is not just how well our students are doing with getting into colleges, but how they're getting there. And the thing that I think we've really stressed over the years, that I've seen the years I've been there, is community involvement, extracurricular and service work that we've talked about tonight, is that our students not only perform extremely well in the classroom because they're not looking just at a transcript, as we all know when it comes to college, sometimes they're looking at the things that make the students stand out. And our students, we, as the Lake Forest High School and our students themselves, are able to provide those things to colleges and make the difference to get into some of these schools, and I think that's something that our students need to be extremely proud of because we know how much they're committed to giving to the school, the service and the community, and doing all the extra things that they do in their busy lives, and we at Lake Forest High School also do a very good job of providing that for them. So, thank you. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Jim. Board members, questions or comments on the report?
Jim, is this the second year since the reorganization that you're reporting on? Since the reorganization of the college counseling program? Is this the... Since the reorganization of the college counseling program, is this the second, third full year?
Third year.
Okay. Not to hang on one stat, but you mentioned the number of Ivy League acceptances at thirteen-ish?
Thirteen, yes.
How's that compare to the previous few years?
It's the second-highest in the last five years.
And if you look at the other highly-competitive schools, do you have a sense for how we're doing relative to prior periods?
We're doing probably every year just as well or better.
So, would the logical conclusion of that be that the reorganization was pretty successful?
It's successful in that our students are, our seven counselors do a tremendous job helping the students, guide them in their decisions for colleges, and their acceptance rates are still maintaining a very high level.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Black?
The, the board received a very complete package of this, and Mr. Field just provided a summary. At least in some years past, I think we've posted all of this complete data on the website, and I'm just, I mean, I would advocate doing that, but I don't know what our plans are, so I wanted to mention it.
All right. Thank you, yes?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think, this is my second year of being able to work in this capacity, and, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't normally look at this material as closely as I have the last two years, and when you look at it as a whole of all of our students, it's impressive, our students are doing very well, and it's a compliment to them as well as Lake Forest High School.
Yeah, I agree. Jim and I have children about the same age and have been through the college selection process, and just to be able to put into perspective five-years' worth of data in terms of, you know, number of kids applying and the number of kids that got accepted, I think helps both parents and students better understand the whole situation than...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Simic?
Yeah, Mr. Field, I'd like to thank you and Dr. Cooley for all the work. I know you've spent a great deal of time working on this, and I arrived in early July, and I know the work began then, and we're in early September now, and so, conversations revolving, revolving around this report have been going for quite some time. One of the things I observed here is that there's a very wide range geographically that our students are being, are applying to and also being accepted in, and you mentioned that there's travel involved with, that our counselors actually visit varying areas, and so, this sounds like it's very intentional work. My question is, to what do you attribute this increased range of applications that you're seeing now as this trend?
Range in geographically?
Increased geographic range that students are applying to. They're both applying in more places and in different places, and also with higher acceptance rates.
Well, I think it's, you know, first off, you know, the economy. I think that definitely people are looking at a wide range of schools, whether public, private, close, far, I think people are willing, students are willing to make concessions and families maybe to travel and be at a school further away where they could get possibly a nice scholarship. We have a Presidential Scholarship, which is a pretty much a full scholarship. We have students that have taken scholarships like that nature, where they have been able to go to college, I won't say cost-free, but pretty close, when really they would have maybe preferred to be at Illinois or somewhere closer to home or another choice, but they went down south to an Alabama or somewhere where they could really get a nice, full package and make it very cost-effective for them and their family. So, there's a lot, as I said, the application numbers as a whole are way up, because I think people are applying and really broadening their options, not limiting to, I'm going to apply to Big Ten schools, or I'm going to go, you know, if I'm top-tier, I'm going to look at the Ivy League schools. I think there's a lot of colleges that are looking for students like we have at Lake Forest High School, and so, students are taking advantage of that.
And the fact that our counselors are traveling and building relationships with these admissions people, that has to be a significant factor, I would think.
It is. Definitely have worked really hard in the Midwest, and as I said, one of the things is just trying to branch out even further, but, you know, on a limited budget and, and just trying to travel, but we've done a pretty good job when they go on these visits. Like, for example, Brad Naughton went to North Carolina, he didn't go to three schools, he went to thirteen schools in three days, four days. So, and that, he told you last year, he was here talking about Ohio, how he did the same thing in Ohio, because you can do that if you really, you know, set it up and really hustle, and it's nice to establish a name with a face.
Other questions, board members? Again, thank you very much.
And I just want to echo Dr. Cooley's support and help through the whole process. She does a lot of the work. I just get to be the fortunate one to come up and present, but Julie works really hard preparing this. Just thank you.
Thank you. And Dick, I do think it's a good idea. This is fascinating reading. I mean, some people don't find it that way, I do, and I think to post it would be great. Any information that we can give our families and our students is helpful.
I think, I'm sorry not to just prolong things, but for those of us who've been around a while and our own kids have gone through, it is very interesting to see the trends, because there are definitely popular schools in different years. I'm hearing about so many kids now interested in DePaul and schools that were popular when my son came through now ten years ago. You know, they may be on the outs, so it is, it's really interesting.
I think word of mouth has a lot to do with it. Okay, that concludes our reports for this evening. Next, we would normally have our board committee reports, but we have not had any committee meetings this school year yet, we've been doing other things. I don't believe there are any liaison reports, but for future meetings, board members, if you are a liaison and you do want to make a report, then let me know ahead of time, ahead of the meeting, and I'll put you on the agenda. So, moving on, we have the action items, and the first is the adoption of the 2012-2013 budget. Jen Hermes?
We gave a pretty thorough report at our budget hearings at this time. I think if there's any additional questions, Alan or I would be happy to address them. Otherwise, we do recommend the budget be approved as presented.
Any further comments, board members?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approved the 2012-2013 budget as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Hearing none, may I have a roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
He left the room momentarily. Aye, motion carries. Next is the rejection of the Dectron bids. Mr. Albus?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about this for a moment. If you can picture the north wall of the pool behind that, and almost the whole length of the pool is a room that contains air-handling equipment. That air-handling equipment is coming to the end of its useful life, and we had been looking at replacing it. The solution that was drawn up by the architects, because of the size of the units, involved cutting a hole in the roof and bringing in a helicopter to drop in the units, and when it went out to bid, we ended up with bids coming in at nine-hundred thousand dollars, or about double what we had anticipated. So, what we're recommending to you tonight is that we reject it, and the next time the operations committee meets, and Mr. Reimer's in the room, he'll get the tour of the area as well, it's Mr. Black, we're going to talk about some alternatives that we've been pursuing with some performance companies. It's going to be more than four-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we originally budgeted, but we think we're going to be able to get it down below the nine-hundred thousand that the bids came in on. So, tonight, we're asking you to reject the bids, and then in, at a future meeting, we're going to come back with an alternate proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Albus. Is there a motion to reject the Dectron bids?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education reject the bids for the replacement of the Naditorium mechanical unit replacement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on this? Everybody did their homework. Okay, may I have a roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye, motion carries. Now, we have the appointment of the Open Meetings Act designee. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan. Items C and D, we have Mrs. Eileen Fowler to be appointed as the Open Meetings Act designee, and also as the local election official for the school district. You can roll these into one motion.
Is there a motion?
I move that Lake Forest High, oh, yes, I move that Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education appoint Mrs. Eileen Fowler as the Open Meetings Act designee, and direct Mrs. Fowler to complete the electronic training curriculum offered by the Illinois Attorney General's Office within thirty days of her appointment, and that we appoint Mrs. Fowler as the local election official for the purpose of conducting election-related matters required by the Illinois School Code and the Illinois Election Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Board members, any questions or comments, or was somebody else hoping to get one of these jobs? Okay, hearing none. So, do a roll-call. I'm going to be safe and do a roll-call vote, please.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye, motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the auditorium portico repair. Mr. Albus?
Thank you. On September sixth, bids were opened to do some repair work for the portico floor and an alternate, which included the replacement of the center slab of cracked concrete on the stair platform. I called Carol to make sure I was interpreting this right, but the recommendation is to award it to William Tonian and Sons for both the base bid and alternate A1, and the, the base bid in the amount of forty thousand four hundred dollars, and alternate A1 in the amount of five thousand dollars, for a total of forty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
Any questions or comments, board members? Then may I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve William Tonlin and Sons' contractors for the auditorium portico repair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye, motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the first-reading asset disposal. Jen Hermes?
Thank you, board members. This one, I'll tell a little story. If you recall, over the last few years, as equipment goes out of service, you know how a typical school building would work, is you move it to some other place in the classroom, and then maybe it gets moved to a closet, or, you know, hopefully not in a hallway, but things start to pile up. So, we had not done a disposal for a few years. Beth Reich, who was in our office at the time, drew the short straw. We called it Beth's Garage Sale, and we actually put together a formal, public sale. We used an online auction house, and it was wonderful. Not only did we sell every single item, including things Cornelius told me and we advertised as does-not-work, everything went, and it was wonderful to get that space cleared up. We did bring that through the finance committee at the time, and we did establish what the process was to dispose of that equipment. You know, first of all, we were going to try to find, you know, a lovely home, someone that was willing to pay for it. If not, we were going to look at, you know, donating it to something of a like organization, so another non-for-profit organization would be our choice. In the event that we couldn't do those things, then we would look for a non-related, anybody who would like to just take it and find it a nice home. And then, in the worst-case scenario, which thankfully we didn't have to go down, we would have to pay somebody to take it. So, that was kind of the parameters that we set up for this version of our garage sale. It was so successful, we did raise approximately fourteen thousand two hundred dollars across both districts for the sale of these, these items. But, as time goes on, we have items that have continued to pile up. Jen Knight found some maps. I don't even want to know where these maps are from, because kids probably would go to the internet before they're going to look at a map. We also have had our general rotation of computers. As you know, we do have our computers on a rotational cycle, so, I think about three hundred computers rotated out of the high school this year, which are now in storage, waiting for a good home. I'm going to call in or just point her out to embarrass her, because she is new to our office, but Brittany, Brittany would wave, is new to our office. She replaced Beth Reich, and so, therefore, assumed the short straw, and is now renamed as Brittany's Garage Sale. What we're asking for today is instead of, well, we did this as a pilot last spring, like I said, we hadn't done it for a few years. What we asked, we had a list of items at that time, and we went through the whole process. What we'd like to do this time is instead of coming back to the board every single time, Jen Knight finds a map, or Jay finds a piece of equipment, or Cornelius breaks a computer, or whatever it may be, sorry, Cornelius, that we have a process in place. It's pretty cumbersome to wait for the next Board of Education meeting and let these things continue to pile up. So, what we have proposed today is a first-reading, though we would entertain a motion to go straight to a second-reading on it. For efficiency's sake, a change in the policy that would say that the superintendent or designee should have the ability to declare personal property, so these are not property, other than, you know, it's not buildings, it's not land, it's not things of that nature, that is no longer needed for school purposes as surplus, and then we would go ahead in the process that was outlined previously and utilize this spring to try to dispose of the item. That's what's before you today. We did provide the existing policy, a strike-out version, and then also what the, what the final version would look like for that piece.
Okay, questions, board members?
Can you tell us just in general terms what the maximum value of any of these items is likely to be?
Most of the things I think we're talking about are probably of a small nature, like a computer, we might get ten or fifteen or twenty dollars for, if we're lucky. I think our largest item the last time might have been in a truck that we used, it was a saltbed truck. I don't remember, did we get, how much did we get for that? Maximum of maybe a couple thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars. That was our big-ticket item. We sold exercise bikes for fifty bucks. Everything was, was, there was a lot of them, but not anything of a large value on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, I don't think, but a comment. I certainly see where you want to go with this, and to improve efficiency and what have you. I get a little concerned, you know, we have dollar limits on what the administration, the superintendent or his designee can do in terms of acquiring assets, and we have some fairly expensive personal property here, and it just seems appropriate to me that we have similar dollar limits on disposition. I'm not trying to get in the way. I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars or something for acquisition for non-competitive bid-type situations, and I'm wondering if that would be a problem, if we imposed a cap, so that if there was some large ticket item, that the board would have the opportunity to consider it, number one. And then, number two, with regard to smaller-dollar-value stuff, if there could just be a report to the board at some point of what's been declared surplus, you know, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, we do actually keep a list, and we do provide it to our auditors as well. Anything that had original value, that originally went on the books, of course, is taken off, and there are some things that were disposed of that even originally didn't qualify as a large enough item for an asset, but we do have a complete list.
Do you think it would be, we get in the way of efficiency to have a...
No, I, I don't. We're not, we're not talking big-ticket items. Obviously, if we have a big-ticket item, we're probably going to run it through the committees, because we're probably replacing it with something else. So, no, I don't think it would hinder this process at all.
It's just not addressed in the policy revision, which will last on and on forever, if not addressed, and I just think it would be prudent to...
I don't think that would...
Include both of those things in there, if it's not a problem, both, some kind of reasonable dollar limit in terms of property being, yeah, maybe, maybe it's, yeah, something like that. And then, number two, a requirement that the board be, be provided a list of lesser-value items that don't require board approval, that have been declared surplus.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an issue, either of those items.
So, the second one, the notification is just procedural, we don't have to put that in the policy, but you do want to include a dollar amount in the policy, is that what you're saying, Mr. Black?
Well, I'd like there to be a requirement that the administration notify the board of, in, at some level of information. I don't want to say detail, because I'm not looking for detail, but it, you know, if, on a, on a semi-annual, annual basis, if, if the administration declares twenty thousand dollars, just to throw out a number of total surplus material, or if that's the amount that, you know, was received in this disposition, I think it would be helpful for the board to know that. And I would recommend it be included in the policy.
Do you have input on that, Mr. Albus, and do you have a dollar amount in a procedure?
You're correct on the twenty-five thousand on purchasing before going to bid. If we were to do it annually and tie it to the time...
If we were to do it annually and tie it to the time we're turning it in with the auditors, that's really no extra work, except making a copy. You know, and so let us talk about a dollar amount to address your concerns and do that. I think those are really good suggestions.
Yeah, I'm not in any way questioning the intent of this group or anything of that nature. I just think it's a matter of policy, though, and we ought to be prudent.
Then that would, we wouldn't be able to waive first reading then, tonight, because we don't have the final policy. So in that case, we would have to table the policy until the next meeting. Are we in agreement on that, Board members?
Do, do we have to do that, or can we just agree? Yeah, why can't we amend it right now?
Well, because we don't know what, it wasn't Alan gonna do some research for us on that. I mean, I don't think we could really do the wording for it right now.
Dollar limits on items are in the aggregate, or how many times? So we ought to just talk about it, unless Jen or Brittany know of a reason not to, you know, does that cause an operational problem to wait and bring it back?
I'm gonna try not to look Jay in the eye.
Oh, they're sitting on a lot of equipment, that's right.
They're sitting on 300 computers.
For one more month, Jay?
You can go put it in Jen's basement.
So there is a problem with delaying this, but we, it should be written properly, and it should be researched.
I think we could, I think we could find space to keep it for another 30 days.
All right, then I'll request that the, that we table this action item and that the administration get back to us next month with a, a new policy, with that information included. Thank you.
Maybe another way, Madam President, maybe another way to address it, if you have any idea, Jennifer, as to the aggregate value that we're talking about here, and if it's, I mean, if you're highly confident it's less than $25,000, then...
I would be absolutely stunned if it was anywhere near that. Yeah, we're, we're not talking anywhere near that. These are, these are not highly desirable machines by any stretch of anyone's imagination.
Well, I, I'm not comfortable putting the administrators on the spot. I, I think if that's the request, then we should give them the time to explore this and research it and get those accurate numbers, and not have to come up with something tonight. So in that case, we will table it for a month.
That's fine. I'm just showing a willingness to address it as a one-off situation. If, if it's important to clear the space, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes. Next, we have the approval of the Human Resources Report. Ms. Knight?
Good evening, Board. You have in your packet a Human Resources Report with the specifics of our personnel activity this month. I am typically, I will give you a little professional development information, but in the interest of trying to lure you back to next month's meeting, and also in the interest of time, given that we may have some additional activities this evening, I am going to save that for October.
Teasers.
I try. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them, but no hints.
Okay, well, then I will ask for a motion to approve the Human Resources Report.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golen? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We will be back next month. This better be good.
I will be too. I better have something good.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. This includes the approval of minutes of a regular meeting from July 17, 2012, an executive meeting from July 17, 2012, minutes of a joint board meeting from August 20, 2012, minutes of executive meeting August 20, 2012, minutes of a special meeting September 5, 2012. Also, the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement from July, August, 2012, and July, August financial report. Last, the disposal of audio recordings from August 18, 2010, September 7, 2010, October 12, 2010, October 25, 2010, November 2, 2010, January 11, 2011, January 13, 2011, and February 8, 2011. Is there any item that a Board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golen? Aye. Motion carries. There were a lot of FOIA requests that were taken care of this month. I'm not gonna read them all. And the announcements, Wednesday, September 12 is our parent open house at 7:00 PM. Thursday, September 13 is a late start day. Classes begin at 9:50 AM. Thursday, September 26 is the faculty in-service. Classes begin at 9:50 AM. Monday, October 8 is Columbus Day, no school. And Tuesday, October 9, 2012, is our next Board of Education meeting here at 7:00 PM. If anything changes with our schedule, we will let everyone know. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
What?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Golen. I, in part of my superintendent's report was to look to Mr. Hoffman and ask him about the ACT scores and six-day enrollment. If I might interrupt, that's, I may be so old.
I'm on a roll. Once we get to that adjournment, I'm just, it's all downhill there.
Our 16-day enrollment was 1,690, and our ACT score for the seventh year in a row was the highest in the history of our school. The class of 2012, we just received all the final reports, and they received a 26.9 composite score. We also have some highest in some of the subcategories, and as always, did real well. But it is, again, the seventh year in a row that we have increased ACT test scores.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Enrollment, 1,690, is that what you reported? Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to add, Madam President, my congratulations to not only Mr. Hoffman, but the entire staff, teachers, department heads, on the ACT performance. You know, a lot of people thought this was some aberration going back six or seven years ago when we first started to post higher scores. I'd particularly like to commend you, Jay, on what's happened in science and the science scores. Big advocate of paying attention to those and try to get them increased. And again, not only have we increased them, we've consistently increased them, and I just think it's an incredible achievement, you and Jim Sullivan and all the staff.
I have to give credit back to our feeder districts across the board. They're really getting us great kids, ready to go. Have a lot coming and going with them as they come, and we take them a little bit farther, but they, they really are, come to us well-prepared to, for the rigor of our school.
Thank you, Mr. Block and Mr. Hoffman. Any other comments? Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.